All right, it is seven P M on August first, two thousand and twenty four. I will call this village board meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. That sounds a lot better with a full room, so I do appreciate it. Everybody coming tonight. If the clerk could call the roll, please.
Trusty Eiberg here, trustee Frank here, trustee Ebedin. President Burkey.
Here.
Trusty Doorward.
Here.
Trusty Bart's here, trustee Miley.
President.
Excellent, thank you very much. Seeing as we have a quorum, we will continue. Uh, the next section is for public comments. I'll note that this is for anything that's not on the agenda tonight. Um, I have a feeling every single one of you are here for something on the agenda, so uh, I I will still see if anybody wants to speak anything off of the agenda. What I would ask you to do is um, come up to the microphone. State your name, please, for the record for Michelle, so that she can record minutes. This is an official meeting, so we do need to record uh, anybody's name that speaks. And also for anybody that might be participating online or anybody that might want to watch afterwards. So is there any public comment uh, for anybody that would like to say anything? All right. We do have four chairs in the front. If you want to take them even and put them in back, that's totally fine. It's up to you. Okay, perfect. All right, we will move on then uh, to the consent agenda, which consists of the approval of minutes from the July eleventh, two thousand and twenty four village board meeting, and approving general funds, water and sewer invoices. I don't believe that there's additional bills. There are no additional bills.
I'm willing to approve the consent agenda, can you hear me?
A second.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second. Are there any other questions, concerns from anybody? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have presentations. The first is a swearing in of patrol officer Thomas. Oh, gosh.
Develis.
Develis, thank you. I always butchered names. It's all good.
Eventual pronunciation.
Perfect. Uh, so without further ado, let's swear.
Do you want to introduce something, give a little background?
Sure, I just want to introduce the board, Tom Dowd. He's a new marshal. He came, he's a full-time Cedarburg officer. He came very well represented by Chief McBarry. Some of you might know, Mike McBarry, he's the marshal of the village chair. So with that, I'm going to introduce him, let him give you a little bit better knowledge of himself.
Good evening. You want me to step up over there? My voice carries pretty well.
Your voice carries really well. I like it, so.
Evening. I'm Tom Bellus, I'm a full-time city city officer, but I've been there about ten years now. Uh, during that point, I've been out in patrol the entire time. I'm uh, lucky enough to be a day shifter now, so if I actually have a normal sleep schedule, I appreciate these. Um, I think I take a lot of work time, so I should appreciate that. But uh, there for ten years, I spent a few years on Ozak County SWAT team over there. Uh, currently, I am the EVOC instructor, so pursuit driving, stuff like that, all our pursuit reviews for the city of Cedarburg. I also sit on a committee that helps put together any recommendations for our pursuit policy in Ozak County. Um, I'm also helping out with uh, debt stuff. I have a background in mixed martial arts. I fought for a few years, I've been a referee for MMA and kickboxing in the state of Wisconsin for about fifteen years now. And then I just recently started in Minnesota and Indiana as well. Uh, I've also been teaching at Lake Shore Executive, the police academy for approximately about ten years. They brought me back in fall after I graduated to help out with fitness stuff, tactics, uh, uh, dance stuff, I got a day and muscle pit instructor up there, so I've been, I'm our resident uh, traffic count in Cedarburg. I average about eighty to ninety traffic stops a month. So, but during that time, I usually only signed about one percent of the people I stopped with. I may or may not have gotten a few speeding tickets in my past. I got one for nineteen over on my way to senior year. One for twenty-one over on the way to police academy, so I was a little bit special, oh my god. Uh, so I try to be uh, human when I do with people and try to understand that I have an interruption in a lot of people's day and that people aren't exactly used to seeing when that's so uh, my goal is also to try to get a thank you.
Excellent, and thank you. We're looking forward to having you here.
Awesome.
I, Tom Develis.
Hi, Tom Develis.
Having been appointed to the office of deputy.
Uh, even appointed to the office of deputy.
But have not yet entered a colleague's thereof.
Have not yet entered a colleague's thereof.
Where?
Where.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
Faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
For the benefit of my ability, so help me God.
The best of my ability, so. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much and welcome to the village. Thank you for deciding to serve here and like you said, you came highly recommended and looking forward to having yet another quality officer on the streets of Fredonia to help out. So thank you so much. All right, next we will move on to the acceptance of a donation for the PWSB splash zone from the Fredonia Alliance Club of ten thousand dollars. Um, as everybody here probably knows, we've been just blown away by the generosity of the community in general uh, towards the project that we started back in two thousand and twenty-three, I think it was, that we started talking about it. Maybe even two thousand and twenty-two, I don't even know anymore, but uh, we started at a campaign, a donation campaign starting this year to try to raise funds for the splash zone. Um, and I'm going to have, as soon as we're done talking about the um, this acceptance of this donation, I'm going to have our administrator go through real quickly where we are as far as uh, an update on on the splash zone. But it's just blown us all away how generous this community has been and how close we are to our goal now uh, that you know, people like the Lions and other other businesses have stepped up. So I want to say thank you so much. Um, maybe take a stand, come on up, tell us, you know, a little bit why you decided to do this. I like that.
On behalf of the uh, Fredonia Lions, um, we'd like to present a check to the village for ten thousand dollars and uh, encourage you to eat more chicken.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and uh, Administrator Jenkins, if you wouldn't mind just giving us a little update, so that everybody can kind of hear where we are, that'd be great.
Sure, I conveniently printed off an update for each of you in front of you, if you would like to take a look at it. Um, and again, just to give some background to the audience that we have here tonight, we originally talked about breaking this project into two phases, phase one being the pad itself, laying the utilities, and then phase two being all the individual exciting features that you see illustrated outside. Phase one uh, was quoted to be uh, one eighty-nine, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, and base two was quoted to be about one hundred and thirty-five thousand. So we blew past phase one very quickly, I would say within the first few months of the year. And as uh, tonight's donation with a couple of the commitments that we have coming in, out of the one thirty-five remaining, we are just under forty thousand that we need for this entire project. That's something, again, that we're blown away. I'll tease another community just because it was in the paper recently. I believe it was Thiensville that had published a base successfully fundraisers for the splash pad, which we're really excited to see another community do. I believe they're fundraising for about the same amount of money, and it took them, what was it, six, six years? And we're sitting here six months, you know, where we're at now. So we're very humbled and very thankful to the community to make this dream a reality.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for that update. And again, thank you to the community at at large that's really stepped up. I mean, within the last three months, I want to say we've raised a hundred thousand dollars or more. It's been absolutely phenomenal, so um, thank you again, everybody. All right, we will move on then to report on village committees. We will first go to the joint fire and EMS committee.
Do you want me to comment on it?
Yeah, please, why don't you?
So um, the last meeting that we were at, which was yesterday, um, we were, uh, we we had uh, our lawyer there and uh, town of Fredonia had their lawyer and we wanted to refine some of the language on the contract, um, got a little tumultuous at the end, but I think we can straighten things out. I think both lawyers are going to get together and straighten some of the language out. I guess the biggest thing that one of the things that the town of Fredonia did not like was the intercept agreement or the the charges that uh, for our ambulances. And so um, I guess we're going to hash out something for that. Um, I guess another, another uh, part of the language was that um, part of Fredonia is is serviced by Random Lake Fire Department. Think you were there for that.
Town of Fredonia, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, did I say town? Yeah, the town of Fredonia, part of it is serviced by Random Lake. And so they wanted some kind of agreement in there eliminating that. So um, hopefully you can refine those uh, things. I think there was something on there, I didn't um, regarding the language of the six percent raise. And uh, each year, um, it it said no more than six percent. Was it, was that right, Chris?
Yeah, so the direction was that the language just really needed to be cleaned up, so that way the interpretation of how it reads to us is uniform throughout each of the municipalities. So that's another thing the lawyer is going to be cleaning.
And that's another thing you need to hash it. So I mean, despite uh, being a little tumultuous at the ending, I think we can come to an agreement. Um, I think everybody realizes the importance of this whole thing, because if if we don't work something out with paramedic service, um, you know, if you have a loved one that needs needs that service, uh, you know, that could be an issue, so um, I I think I'm I'm fairly positive that we can get this ironed out at the end, hopefully, and uh, um, it'd be beneficial for all four jurisdictions, so.
Yeah, I think so too. I think uh, you know, like you said, there were some things that we were going through, but at the end of the day, it's an agreement that it's a it's a work in progress. We're working towards it and um, looking forward to having a good, strong agreement for all municipalities involved.
Yeah, and then I guess, uh, also I should probably mention that uh, referendums being discussed uh, for possible, well, not possible, but will very likely be in the fall for both us and the village. So, and then uh, also the the towns, two townships, well, they don't have referendums, so they'll be doing uh, voting on it in one of their board meetings, so. That's about it, I guess.
Thank you. Any questions of trustee Miley at all? Good to see you back, by the way.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it. Hope your wife's doing well. Absolutely, go ahead.
I spoke earlier this morning with trustee Haas, who's been our county supervisor for the last four years, and um, the the subject of uh, the grant funds came up in particular, and he had mentioned to me that he has no doubt that the county will clawback to get the grant if we don't end up, if this thing doesn't take place. The grant funds were for us to establish this, and if it doesn't get established, the grant funds are going to clawback. And we'll have come up with six hundred thousand dollars between us and the county then. So um, I I suspected that, and I bounced that off of him, and he agreed totally. He says, yeah, they'll they'll try and claw them right there. It's important that we've, we have one shot at getting the grant, and that makes this all possible. So if we use our heads and sit down and go ahead and decide, we will be able to get something put together, and it will eventually, after years of our fellow, it'll work, it'll work fine. But if we don't do that now, and somebody just goes back with it, um, we may not have the chance again, so. It's very important, we need to spend our service, our population is getting older. Uh, we have, it's worth. But uh, it's it's, you know, how is your life worth a dollar a month, or a dollar a year for lessening? Or a dollar a day? Some of the, some of the costs that we're looking at, we're up in there, and we don't think we're going to have to um, do that far as far as a referendum. But uh, whatever comes out that will allow us to actually make this thing happen and continue, we're going to have to put that on our agenda. And and we're we're taxing ourselves also, so if everybody's taxing us, I'm hard to do. But it's, this is what we're put here for, to make those hard decisions and know all the facts and be able to do the addition and figure things out, and say, well, this this is what we got to do this. Well, and and when uh, time comes to uh, um, actually cast a vote whether or not you want to refer that to go through, I ask that you respect all of those aspects and and use your, use your heart and your feelings for your neighbor. And uh, and make sure that that thing passes. I might probably want to have a chance to talk to as many people, you know, one time, and between that and ours, I still get, take advantage of doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Doorward. Appreciate that. All right, any other questions for trustee Miley? If not, we'll move on um, to the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting.
Trusty Bart's?
Uh, so we met a couple weeks ago. Uh, the planning was our second annual Mondonia Mud Run, which was a huge success. We had that on Saturday, we have a hundred people, so grand. Um, did three different courses. The kids had a blast. Everybody got, they got muddy. It was great. Uh, perfect day for it, so we are in the planning phases for next year, so we started doing our third annual mud run, which is exciting. Uh, we continue talking about our music series. We had our third music series this last week, Tuesday, with uh, Chow, I think, and uh, Snack Shack were there. It was a fairly decent turnout. It was hot, but it was still pretty decent. We have one more music series left um, for the summer, which is on August twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, whatever the last Tuesday is in August. Um, so please plan to stop down and check it out. Always a good time. Uh, we continue talking about the planning for the movie in the park, so that will be coming up on September sixth. Watch Facebook for updates on that. Uh, we also discussed the holiday tree lighting and the lights for the park. Uh, we do that every year in November, so we're really excited to bring you guys another uh, nice holiday event at that time. Uh, we talked about ordering some additional streetlight banners uh, to help elevate the main streets of Fredonia, so we have those on order, and those will be coming um, starting highlight, uh, highlighting Highland Avenue once it's completed for Fredonia Avenue, so that's super exciting. Um, so watch Facebook for updates for a few more events coming this year, and then we'll try and pull some together for over the winter as well.
Excellent, thank you for that recap. Are there any question, questions of trustee Bart's? If not, we're going to hear from her again for the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary subcommittee.
I won't bend your ear too much on this one. Um, we had our last subcommittee meeting uh, this last week, and we just kind of went through and recapped how the event went. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to the village residents that attended the uh, event that day. We had zero complaints to the police department that day. Um, that is a huge accomplishment for this village. Everybody there was respectful, everybody was responsible. Uh, so thank you to the village for enabling us to do an event like this and be responsible and not have any issues, so it was great. Um, we kind of went through everything that went well that day, with how we can do things better, and we've already got our next meeting planned to start planning our Fund Before the Fourth for two thousand and twenty-five. Um, we're really excited about it and ready to kick it off, so if anybody wants to volunteer and help do the planning, I'm gonna I'm gonna keep plugging away at that. We can always use more volunteers, so if anybody's looking to get back to the community a little bit, want to just do a little part, we take any volunteer time we can.
Absolutely, and I think that's so important. Uh, I mean, we we're only a group of seven up here, six tonight, but uh, we can only do so much, and really, we have to thank friends of Fredonia Group was outstanding, helping to put that um, event on. And if there's any, you know, if anybody's interested in helping out that way, it's not a ton of time, commitment, anything like that. Don't have to sit on a board, don't have to do anything like that, but uh, just being able to help out and bounce ideas off of people, it really keeps the community moving, keeps things going forward, and uh, allows events like trustee Bart said to happen, like the one hundred and fiftieth. Um, the Fund Before the Fourth, Mud Run, all that stuff, so it's a good time. Community appreciates it, the uh, the kids appreciate it. And um, we certainly appreciate everybody's help too, so thank you very much. All right, any questions for trustee Bart's? All right, if not, we're going to move on for items for discussion and or action. Um, I'm going to just real quickly outline how this is going to go. Um, there might be a lot of comments, which I'm totally okay with, but what I want to do is I want to have uh, trustee Bart's introduce the proposal from the ATV UTV club. Um, I would like somebody from the UTV club president, anybody here that would maybe want to speak to this proposal to have their proposal up here, talk, talk about what it means and and everything in it. Then I'd like to welcome feedback from anybody that's in the room. Uh, I have a little bit of feedback from other people that are in the community that I'd like to read as well. And then at that point, we'll shut down the public um, comment section on it per se, and discuss as a board and deliberate as a board. If we do need any more further input, at that point, we will ask individual people if we need anything. Uh, but just with a group this size and an and an agenda item this size, it's it's important to keep order, so I would really appreciate it if we could do that tonight. So uh, without further ado, trustee Bart's, if you'd like to introduce this, that'd be great.
All right, again, I won't uh, bore you guys to death with me talking all night. Um, so I've been on board for a little over a year and a half. Within that year and a half, I've had the growth. Uh, citizens ask about being able to allow ATVs, UTVs in the village, things like that. Um, I've had the fortunate plans to meet the members of the Lake Shore ATV club. Um, I've had discussions with them and a few people uh, within the village and everything. Um, so they we talked and we discussed um, providing a proposal to the village to allow ATVs and UTVs in the village. They have put together a very nice proposal for us, how they're going to support the program and all of that. I think personally that this can be a very good asset for our community. Um, not only does it bring our community together with other local communities, such as Wabaka and Red Lake. Um, I think it can be great for our businesses as well. We want to get people into Fredonia. We want to show them what Fredonia has, and this is another way to bring people into Fredonia to see um, what we can offer them, so. Um, so I think this could be, could be a great asset to the community. And on a personal level, um, one of the other reasons this is near and dear to me is my uncle had brought this up with another club um, in past years, and he had been a huge proponent for doing this over the years. He has since passed away, um, and this is part of my way to be able to honor him. Um, and try and bring something to the community for him. He lived in Fredonia for forty-four years. Uh, grew up in the area and really loved this village and wanted to see this village grow, and I want to take that memory and keep growing, so.
Excellent. Awesome. Well, I think what we'll do now then is I would invite, what is it, Tom Bierinbaum? Tom?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, um, there's a lot of people here that
Tom, do you mind coming up here? Sorry. We just, especially with the recording, we have to make sure that we can hear it.
So, I'm president of the Lake Shore ATV club. Uh, we've gone in front of other communities. And um, I guess I would like to let my staff, uh, not staff, but former or other board members have prepared to present this to you.
Sure.
Answer any questions you have. Uh, we have presented it to Belgium, town of Belgium, town of Fredonia, uh, Random Lake, so so far, we've had positive feedback, so just see what your reaction would be, and if you'd be willing to pull this rough.
Excellent.
Well, everybody, first of all, thank you Tiffany for bringing this up, and thank you to the board for giving us this time to just kind of tell you more cases, see what they think.
Can you state your name real quick? Sorry.
My name's Kevin Lifer.
Alright, thank you.
Members of the Lake Shore ATV club. And we have a short little presentation, and with me, I, it's my life, Brenda Lifer, and also Bob Cubing, another member of our club. It's a short little proposal, and we're just going to present this to you uh, to just give it some thought about uh, creating and approving an ordinance to establish your local streets for ATV and UTVs. So I'm I'm hoping that we're going to answer all your questions with our little presentation. And if not, at the end, we'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Sure.
Uh, with more hesitation, my wife Brenda will take over. She's the head of the group anyway.
Way to leave her hanging.
Um, a few of us have gotten together a few years ago and just said, wouldn't it be nice to just drive out with all my dad and his two miles down, wouldn't it be nice to just get on the ATV, drive down there? Um, and then we had the farming use, and that's a whole nother topic, but here we wanted to do it the right way, the legal way, so a few of us had together, wouldn't it be nice to do this, and we decided to have a, a little um, meeting, and we put a few flyers on there, and anybody interested, and we had sixty-five people come from all over, from West Bend, from Port to Shippensburg to Fayetteville, I mean, I mean, we had people from all over. This is interesting. So our club began, and um, so, I mean, we're an official club, the whole thing, the makeup, the board members, everything, so um, we support the local community in many ways. We've ridden in a lot of raids, kids love to see it. We've given rides, we've had tours, we go on day trips, we support the local. Uh, we support the local businesses, we have day rides up to, you know, different you know, establishments and and restaurants. We ride and help with flying day in the parking and lots of road fest and all that fun stuff. Um, one of our biggest things every year that we do for our area is we have worked with the Kellerman ATV club. And every October, we have a Make-A-Wish event, and this past October, it's a Make-A-Wish ride, a charity ride. And we go on a big long ride for the day, and we come back and have a charity auction. We raised twenty-eight thousand dollars for the Make-A-Wish in Wisconsin. So that's pretty huge, so it's a good, good uh, club. Uh, I'm one of the youngest members, because these things are very expensive, and but um, but we work with uh, local businesses and things like that, so um, we want to do things the right way. We've had several members trained as DOT certified uh, safety instructors for ATVs. Several of us have been to Trail Ambassador training, signing training, the state convention for ATV, yes, there is such. Um, and our mission is just simple, to create uh, to create a safe and positive future for ATV recreation, and to put together some family-oriented stuff. That's it. Next, follow me on all the posts.
Thank you, Brenda. That's my daughter.
Oh, it's a family, yeah.
It's all in the family. Um, my name is Bob Cubing, H U B I N G, I live in the town of Belgium, right outside of Lake Church. I'm a member of the Trail Ambassador Program, and Brenda will get into that a little later. I'm also a certified DNR ATV safety instructor. What I like to do is briefly go over the ordinance and kind of point out some of the important aspects of it. Like Brenda said, it's very similar to the village of Belgium, village of Cedarburg and the surrounding townships. The majority and all the rules of operations are included as natural with some statutes. Um, but we still list them in the ordinance just to kind of bring them out so that people read them. Otherwise, you get operators that don't really read these statutes all that close, but we do read the ordinance. And it's very important. So I'd like to highlight just a few of them for you. Uh, no ATV, UTV operators are operating the speed and access of the posted speed limit. Operator of an ATV, UTV showing all traffic laws, local ordinance, DNR regulations. No person to operate an ATV, UTV that does not comply with all the No person should operate an ATV, UTV that does not comply with all the applicable equipment. As in the statutes. No person should ride or park any part of ATV in violation of the passenger restrictions, again in the statutes. Uh, no person should operate an ATV that is in violation of noise limits. And along with that, we will add, or it's already in your ordinance that we presented. Radios and sound systems must be kept to a minimal and limited to within the personal space of the vehicle. Now recently, we've been working with the Ozakia County Sheriff's Department and the Public Works Department with Ozakia County. And we came up with some links and these things, what they do is they. They connect communities to communities, communities to businesses. Um, a good example is on the west side here of the village. As you saw, Highway H goes from Wabaka to uh, Big Joe's. Gas station and also connects the link connects Wabaka to the Thomas Sappo. You probably noticed the sign that just went up the last few days on there. And we were pretty close there, they said with Ozakia County Sheriff's Department, and we came up with, I mean, three very important. Uh, rules of operations that really pertaining to this area. One is ATV, UTV operators are required to have proof of liability insurance. That is not helping under the statute. Why I don't know. No opening tax limits are allowed in or on any ATV, UTV while the vehicle's in operation. Makes sense. And also the time limit or the hours of operations, five AM to eleven PM. Now those three orders of uh, rules of operations, we like to people similar throughout the whole township, especially in Ozakia County. And there are the Ozakia County uh. Uh, ordinance themselves. Now, I didn't rule a sign plan, you gotta check, look at that. Um, route signings pretty much standardized, it was toxic. Uh, in order to have a road, they have to have it signed, that's in the statutes. Um, no matter if you pass the ordinance tonight, publish it no matter what. If it isn't signed, the road is not open. It's not open until it's signed. Uh, keep that in mind. And let's go through. What has to be done if this ordinance gets passed. Uh, three letters have to be written. I think we gave examples of them are in the package, one to Wisconsin DNR, State Patrol, and to Ozakia County Sheriff's Department. Along with a copy of the ordinance and a map of all the streets are depicted. If the ordinance gets passed and published. What I will do is work with the Public Works Director and for the location and times the signs that will be installed in the village. At that time, after I. We go over all the signing and all that, we'll order the signs, order the posts. And in the state, and as they do the state, and we'll be in contact with your Public Works Director to make sure we get the posting of signs in the right place. We try not to go up in front of people's homes or that they don't cite this, despite any citation. So. Finally, once the posts and signs are installed, then the streets are finally open to uh, people to travel. Um, there is a section on there that Wisconsin acts and statutes. Couple of the acts deal with ATV route signing, the other one allows municipalities to adopt such an ordinance, like. You're involved with who we hold. And also uh, the. The statutes do state that the town and village can designate roads as ATV roads. So. Finally, I'd like to say briefly this. The operations of ATVs and UTVs are solely the responsibility of the operator. Keep that in mind. Um, it is their responsibility to know what the ordinance is, it is their responsibility to know where to drive, over. So, the sat, thank you. I think I turn it over to Brenda.
You get me again, sorry. So one other reason why this is so important here is because as much as we like snowmobiling, there's not a whole lot of snow. ATVs, UTVs, these interchangeably can be used year round. Uh, but one thing we just wanna mention is um, trails and routes, there is a difference. Road or trails are primarily like Seaford North, Offroad and things like that. Interesting enough, there's twenty-three hundred miles of trails in Wisconsin. Two thousand three hundred, that's it. For routes, which are the roads, which we're proposing here today. There are sixty-two thousand miles of road routes in Wisconsin. That's a lot, and the mark of forty is supposed to have forty thousand, so less than here is, that's a lot. So it means a year around here, which is really nice. I just wanna highlight a few of the safety things. Uh, some of the details here with the regulations, um. Just a lot of things are like the boats, this one reveals some motorcycles, it's not much different than any other mode of transportation. But it is much safer. A lot of times you're on four wheels, three wheels, four wheels, um, instead of just two. And the Wisconsin DNR requires ATV operators to complete an ATV sa- safety certification course. If you're born, for anyone born after January first of nineteen eighty-eight, so that's required. In uh, in order riding a public trail or road in Wisconsin, which is very similar to the hunting and voting mobile certificates. You know, to upgrade on public roads, ATVs are required to follow the speed limits and all regulatory signs. To be registered, they have to have a license plate and they have to have their headlight and taillight on at all times on the road roads. Helmets are required for anyone under eighteen, just like on a motorcycle. UTVs have seatbelts, just like a car, which are required to be fastened at all times. Regarding insurance, it's the operator's responsibility to apply the insurance as indicated in this ordinance. Uh, I would like to just briefly address that the warning labels, uh, some people may see on ATVs. Just like snowmobiles and mopeds, they say, or they have changed. They say do not allow operation of public roads unless designated for off-highway vehicle access. So if the road is deemed eligible, you can ride on the road, so it's not the same. Again, sixty-three or sixty-two and a half thousand miles of road roads are already designated, so this is working. Um, the only other thing I wanna mention is, this is a. I mean, anybody can ride these vehicles, the elderly, the. People with all kinds of abilities. It's the fresh air, um, you also. I mean, it's more safer than motorcycle, I'm not touching motorcycles, but. I mean, you could see it, they're twice as wide, it's twice as wide. Um, and a UTV is bigger than a smart car, as you can see in the dimensions that are in the, in the ordinance, or in the cap that you have. So, um. That's about it, but safety has progressed and the laws and regulations have changed from what we remember from years ago, so it's definitely a much, much. Much more nice needed in it, yes.
I mean, I'm about to get up here. We were nervous when she said the elements, you know, that she looked back at you. What I'd like to just present before we close here is, um, we're all about safety. This is, we have family members out there, we have a lot of people, friends and neighbors and tribes. And one of the things we've done as a club, we've had to act and got involved with what they call the Trail Ambassador. Should be something in your uh, packet, but uh, it's been in place for twenty-three years. It's kind of a way for us to. Kind of regulate and keep an eye on our sport, to make sure everybody's playing that. So, uh, it's a partnership with Wisconsin DNR and the DOT. Uh, in our club, we have six train, trail ambassadors and. There's a little bit behind it, there's a background check, it's a couple of day course, uh, with the field and the classroom. To get certified, and then to get to carry around these fancy little badges. But what it does is when we go out on a, on a ride, or we working as a trail um. Ambassador, we call in to our communication center, which is actually located in Sheboygan, Wisconsin. It's, it's manned twenty-four seven, every day of the year. So what a trail ambassador would do, we don't really have the authority to write tickets or anything like that. But if we see on the trails and we see things going wrong, we stop and talk to you and say. You know, this is a sport that we'd all like to use, we don't wanna ruin it, let's do it the right way. Or we're there to help with, do you have any questions or maps or stuff like that? So we have the authority to patrol our roads and trails, make sure everybody's riding safely. Uh, kinda keep an eye on the conditions of the trails and the signs and any other hazards and just talk to the ATV riders. We carry this photo ID so people know where, who we are and what we do. Like I say, they're. The communication center knows when we go out, they keep a GPS location of us all the time. There's always two ambassadors that go out at the same time, that never disappoint the time. And then we check back in with them, write a report, and then close out the day with the communications center. So, it may seem a little odd, but really it's a good way to regulate our sport and kind of make sure that we're all doing this the right thing, so. Um, the other thing our club has got involved with is, there's five of us within our club. Who went to DNR uh, training course to get certified as a DNR ATV certification instructor. So like when Brenda was saying, everybody after a certain age has to be certified. To, and carry a certification to ride ATVs into Wisconsin. We can present that course and we're looking at putting on some training within the next, well, hopefully later this year. So, that's pretty much it. I'm gonna leave you with just a couple of thoughts, I mean, we'll. Let you, let you go here, but. Um, I just wanted you to have these key points in your mind. We are requesting the village to adopt the ordinance to allow ATV and UTVs. On all the city or village streets, in the village. This has been working really well in Belgium, random Cedar Grove, we went through Cedar Grove and everybody's extremely happy about it. Um, all required signs and installation will be pro- provided by the Lake Shore ATV, UTV Club. And will help with installation of these signs. And the other thing we, we, we ask you, I guess, if you have any doubt, please feel free to contact your neighboring communities. It's been in Random Lake for several years, it's been in the Village of Belgium. Pete Anzie is the village president, and we, we've been there for three years in Belgium, it's really a lot like Fredonia. There's higher traffic volumes on Main Street in Belgium, but. It's been working absolutely top, and everybody seems to be happy with it. The proposal is just simply another form of transportation. It's just like the motorcycles came around and started going out there. And it's a recreation activity for local people and all your neighboring communities. So, so people can come and go into the village and utilize some of the businesses and. We can take a ride, we'll be ended up, everybody seems to wanna end up at Ice Creek Park, at Cedar, Cedar Valley, so that's all tops. So that pretty much concludes our presentation. We'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
A question, um. So, I mean, these are unique from motor vehicles, obviously. Um, is there an age? Limit then, is it like sixteen, they have a, an instruction permit for this, or an instruction for, for a permit to operate this?
I believe it's, it's. Uh, twelve is the youngest age.
Okay.
Have to be certified to be on the machines. On UTV, they have to be sixty. Which is right in the UTV.
Okay, ATVs are twelve though.
What's that?
You said ATVs are twelve is the.
These are twelve, and just sort of like most service.
Yeah. Okay, and they, and, and so they can be on those prescribed. Uh, uh, highways.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and that's, that's beautiful, and that's by the states.
Okay.
That's been happening. Everywhere from Wisconsin Dells opened up, Rhine Manor, all the villages and all the.
Okay.
And just some people like ATVs, you just travel, you know, they're usually called four-wheelers. And then the UTVs are more of a, like a, like a vehicle.
Okay, the UTV is the vehicle.
Yeah.
Okay, yes. Uh, just one more question, and uh, this is just a question that. The operating law and tax kid laws, uh, obviously apply. The same to the ATVs and UTVs, correct?
Yes.
Is it, is it that, that point zero eight limit and all the other things, or is it, or is it a stricter?
No.
Okay.
Same stricter, and I understand this here, but I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure that it's exactly the same as, as a.
Okay.
Car or truck or the other. Uh, usually the DNR will get involved if something like that happens, if there's a burn accident or if somebody's getting.
Hmm. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Alright, thank you so much for that uh, presentation. Sincerely appreciate it. I would now like to ask if there's any comments from anybody in the audience. Uh, and again, if you had any comments, anything you wanted to say, please step up to the, to the microphone. State your name for anybody that might be in attendance and um, can go from there.
Hello, my name is Pete Anzie, I'm the president of Village of Belgium. We've had the ATV, UTVs in our village streets since uh, November of two thousand twenty-one. To this day, we have no problem, we have no injuries, we have nothing. Um, it's a great asset to your businesses. I mean, it's nice to take your UTV down to the, down to the restaurant for breakfast in the morning. But uh, I think it helps out our, our business quite a bit. Uh, just let you know, we have no problems on the Belgium. So, I mean, everybody behaves. And I live right in a main dragon. I would say if I see five, maybe six machines go through a day, that's about it. So it's not like you're gonna see a hundred come through.
Hmm.
You know, so. You guys are doing the village of Fredonia, favorite by a lot of us.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Ben Roselitz, a village resident here. Uh, I would like to touch base when you said. Is, does the uh, OWI laws apply to ATV? And the answer is absolutely yes. So I, I spent twelve years working for Washington County Sheriff's Office, have a little bit of credibility there. Uh, I've been snowmobiling in ATV my whole life, I've seen several people up north get their. Uh, licenses revoked or operated in snowmobile or ATV, out of the influence of the same laws apply, absolutely. And as mentioned, the DNR is gonna be issued an affidavit if it is. And so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Does anybody else have anything that they wanna?
Hello. I'm in favor of UTVs. I like ATVs, however, my question is safety. In this village alone, I walk a lot, all most of the day. We have many elderly, children, many areas where the children are playing. And you have people that are on scooters. You have people that are on electric wheelchairs, you have people that are on walkers. There are even yes blind people that are in wheelchairs. Now I can say from a fact that when. These ATVs have been here before, became known that they shouldn't be driving each year. There are areas of the village that have become a race. I know the one particular area where there are at least four or five ATVs owned within. I'd say point six miles. At least don't on a regular basis, they did go on a regular basis. I've seen them driving in a circle in that area, I've seen them with. A mom carrying less than a two-year-old that ice fell out, she had to grab it by the arm, so it wouldn't fall off. My question is, who's going to be there all the time to enforce the safety? What is it gonna take? Now, in two thousand and twenty-two, three teens were seriously injured in an ATV crash. The altering vehicle hit trees rolled over in the yard. And those were, to, on our point, was three twenty-twenty-two graduates from Ozaki High School. Were seriously injured in the August twenty-second, altering the vehicle accident near sixteen hundred block of Meadow Park Road. The three women, which I can't pronounce their names, looks like Paige Pira, Maria Nails. And Madeline Delkier. Were enjoying the summer night, I'm with an ATV UI, when the driver experienced difficulty navigating a turn. Onto a residential driveway, according to the Ozaki County Sheriff's Office. Captain Marshall Herman was the officer. The ATV traveled onto a wooded area, struck multiple trees and rolled over. Throwing the three riders from the vehicle. Sappo and Fredonia Fire Department transported two of the women to Freder Hospital. At a Level One Trauma Center in Wataosa. While Wabaka sent the third woman to an Aurora Medical Center, according to Wabaka Fire Department Administrator Dennis Rache. The women were awake and alert uh, when first responders arrived. First responders noted that there was significant bleeding as a result of the accident. The Ozaki County Sheriff's Office was called to the scene at approximately eight fifteen PM, room number six. There are other incidents in this area that also involve ATVs. I know that there was another incident where there was someone that died. I told there was, I know, at least two more where there were injured severely. Yes, it's a great. Yes, it's a great league cattle TVs, however. Most of the accidents, the majority of accidents for ATVs occur on pavement because the tires are not made for pavement. Now, in the country, I can see riding on trails and even having less scrap. Because it isn't that much safety. People are trained to help save, yes. Who's gonna be there twenty-four seven? To enforce this, what's it gonna take? What happens when that blind person in a wheelchair gets hit in the back? We don't have sidewalks like they do in Belgium and these other communities. Now, it'd be great if you did, but that's another large amount of money. Put sidewalks in and the streets that we have here are not wide enough to accommodate. Those ATVs and sidewalks and the extra activity. And if somebody should get hurt, who's gonna ultimately be responsible? Is it gonna come back on the village? Thank you.
Right, thank you very much. Uh, anybody else want to?
Believe me, safety is number one with all of us. It really is. But the issue we talked about about the three girls that were injured on the ATV, I'm also on a Belgian firing department, so I know a little bit. Off road, on their private property. They live on that water, but it wasn't on a road.
No, I said it was turning onto their drive from a gated area on the street.
But but they hit it for something. And it doesn't matter. Uh, you're right. It's it's and it's a horrible thing. We we. We don't want to see that anywhere because our sport foolproof. There is no sport that's fooled. Cycling, uh water skiing, anybody can get hurt anywhere. But we think a lot of extra steps that to make sure that it's a serious sport. Believe me, I have three boys and I let them drive, but I'm very cautious. I don't want to see I fight for any of my friends or family hurt either. One of the things that you brought up, and and this is a good point too, about the tires. That's kind of by the wayside. That's kind of older technology now. Like, for example. I look at a lot of our club members in here and I think I don't know of any of them that don't have radial tires now. And and that's just because of the atmosphere where we live and where we where we ride. We're on roads. The the rubber mud tires or whatever just don't survive on pavement. So people buy radial tires and the industry has been very proactive about that. To keep tire higher tire pressures, it went to the state. Uh, the DNR, and we have a club called Wafa. That's the Stableline ATV Club. And they bring it brought the legislators to allow. Higher pressure tires on roadways and it's it's another way of trying to make this sport safe. So. I I I think when we leave here, what we really gotta think about it, it's just another form of transportation. It really is. When I drive my UTV. Honestly, I I pulled up to a vehicle at the Piggly Wiggly in Port Washington. It was a Smart Car. And I had to get my tape measure out because I've never seen this little thing so small before. And my UTV is eight inches longer and about six inches wider than that car. What makes me any different than the vehicle on the road is how I drive. And if, you know, who's gonna regulate these? Well. It's an enforcement problem for vehicles, for trucks, for motorcycles, even bicyclists. We had a a bicyclist down in Lake Church that was killed a couple of years ago because. He thought he could buzz through the stop sign and Lake Church drove and there was a car coming, so. You know, accidents happen. We try to minimize them, but every sport. You know, uh you just have to use your head and and. Be safe about what you do. And that's what we're really trying to do. I you know, I wear these and kind of laugh a little bit, but. These are kind of important, you know, teaching kids how to drive UTVs and make sure they do it safely and follow rules. Has to be an honor for one. And then our ambassador program that I talked about. I think at the heart, when we're out driving around, if we see something wrong. Let's talk about it because this sport, you know, is growing. It's growing very fast. I want to make sure we do the right thing. So I appreciate the comments. Thank you, but. You know, I think we can do it the right way.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to comment that's here?
Yeah, it's fun actually. We appreciate the comments. Um, but there's a there is statute that. Uh, eight ninety-three point eight zero for emergency support that says it creates immunity from liability for the express recipients of local governments. Uh, open those ATV UTVs fall under this legislature, you so you are immune to public abuse.
Well, my question. We love the yard. That's sitting there going. What happened? My child just went out to the mailbox. The ATV just came rolling around. And in them, we don't have sidewalks. The blind people rely on their other senses. For example, the area that will be fine with the middle tall hair. That's the one that's like. They can more around the earth. They almost hit it. What about that blind person?
Well, the the village of Belgium, they we only have sidewalks and we didn't issue. Uh, but. It's still different from the car than that, you know, there's ice skates and other people who drive a little bit breathlessly. That could happen in as well. Bicycle, a car or an ATV. Believe me, I I see more of them. Quite fast too, but it's an enforcement issue.
Right.
I'm gonna just, I'm just gonna interrupt real quickly and just say any comments, please, instead of doing a back and forth, let's talk. To the board. This is the opportunity to have a public comment towards us, please. Okay. Anything else? Anybody else? Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, in Salt Lake, Milwaukee Street. Cars like race on that road too. I don't think that UTVs, you know. Yes, they might go past once in a while, but I it's not a huge issue. On Avenue D here, I see where. Where I go that people obey the laws. Um, as far as you're concerned with blind people, your EV car to go days make minimal noise. I mean, a blind person is not gonna hear a EV. You know, the hum of the tires maybe, but they're wider than a UTV.
Thank you.
Okay, well, it's a lack. Or a hybrid vehicle, yes. They do have a BP sensor, however, blind and near. And I know this firsthand because my daughter is blind. She is in a wheelchair. She is in a wheelchair and she has almost been hit by an ATV. You think twice. I think safety is great. I also have a friend who lives up north always. His son, that. An ATV with full mirror on everything. Anything can happen anywhere. But the question is, right here in this area, I have lived here for thirty years. What can we do to keep it safe? You can't, like you said, you can't enforce. Safety all the time. You're gonna have twelve-year-olds out here. Sure, they'll get certified, but now with the law, I can ride. Yes, these ATVs are, but they are allowed. And to a blind person, you have just wiped out any other sensory ability you have. And no, my daughter has not been blind her whole life. My daughter went blind three hundred years. So she could have, it can become blind. There's no reason to commit and then they get it. But not just safety, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. All right, is there anybody that has not commented yet that would like to make? A comment? Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much for your participation. Thank you for the presentation. Um, what we're gonna do now is I am just gonna read something. I I did get a text message from um constituent tonight. Right before the meeting, actually, they asked to be, you know, remain anonymous. Um, I'll read you a couple of points from what they had said. Uh, they just said, my concern with safety, I think that the operator must have a valid Wisconsin driver's license and that the vehicle needs things that are required on licensed motor vehicles. Headlights, taillights, turn signals, brake lights, seat belts, et cetera, to protect both the ATV and UTV operator and passengers. And the other motor vehicles on the road. And then they also just said um a couple of other thoughts that just occurred to me. Mufflers for one, the ATV, UTV should be off the road after dark. Um, and again, just said, you know, they're they're in favor of ATVs, but that those were some of their concerns uh with with potential ordinance if we decided to enact one. So. All right, I thank you, everybody, for your input, and I think um what we'll do now is it's this body's. Job to decide whether or not we want to move forward and entertain taking this and sending it to staff to take a look at this ordinance to start um. Deciding if we want to move forward with drafting an ordinance like that. And uh that, if anything, would be. What we would be doing tonight is is considering whether or not we're going to do that. Um, this isn't, you know, the vote coming out of here tonight is not to establish that this ordinance goes into effect. There's a kind of a lengthy process that the the clerk will go through. A little bit later, if we get to that point. Um, but at this point, I think that it we need to have some deliberation between the board members. You guys are welcome to stay, maybe except for you. Uh, and again, if we have any questions uh about anything, we'll reach out to you. So I open up the floor to anybody on the board that has any questions or comments or concerns. Be the biggest lack of discussion that I've.
I was I was kind of waiting.
Yeah, right. Yeah, no kidding.
I was I was kind of waiting for somebody else, but. Um, I think it's, for me, this is kind of similar. I know it's not the same thing, but it's kind of similar. To the discussion we had about golf carts. Uh, we never enacted anything as far as an ordinance for that. But um. I could see that there's. Quite a groundswell of people that are in favor of this, so it. And I think showing up at a board meeting like this, uh you know, shows the importance of how they feel about this. Um. My sentiments are similar to the the golf carts. I think um. This is America and we have freedoms and I think this is about uh, you know. Being able to exercise some of our freedoms and uh. Having these freedoms, we also feel that we have to be responsible and. And govern ourselves, and I feel that that this is happening here. Um. Also, and and on another note, uh. I almost see similarities between this and snowmobiling. Um, I've gone snowmobiling before up in in. In Wisconsin and Michigan. And what do you do? You stop around along these routes and you stop at various businesses, some of them taverns. And you patronize these places. And so they're gonna patronize certain businesses here in Fredonia. So I think that's a positive thing. And then lastly, what I'd like to say is that um. It seems that all these other jurisdictions have ordinances and rules and we're gonna make us, we're gonna be an island in ourselves that we don't. Want ATVs or UTVs here. I don't think that would be beneficial for us, so. That's all I have to say.
I do think I can just pipe in a little.
Absolutely, yeah.
I do think looking at, you know. Where Fredonia is going and the direction that we're taking it to go in, we're looking at our surrounding communities. Um, like it's been mentioned before tonight, Wabaco's uh route, um Belgium's that route. Random Lake has routes. It's it's gonna continue to connect us. And it's gonna tie not only our village community, but also the northern Ozaki community. We can patron our local businesses. We can have other citizens from other communities come in and and patronize our businesses. And it allows us another freedom to be able to jump on a route or a trail and. Go with your family on a Sunday afternoon to go get ice cream or. You know, have a charity ride through town, whatever the case is. Um. I think it's just another sense of. Of pulling a whole community together and. An even bigger community together. You know, it ties us in. We're one of the last ones in the area to do it. Not saying that's the reason to do it, but I think it's a it's a good. Idea to try and pull us together with everybody else that's in the area.
Donnie, do anything else?
Well, I wanted to give her her first shot in my interview system. My question is, why do you have to be in the cities and villages? You have the whole state to drive around. Why do you have to be in incorporated areas? Where there's a lot of things together, there's a lot of population density, there's a lot of kids doing things that kids do in the city. That they don't do on a farm. Kids on a farm are they're used to looking out for ATV ATVs and UTVs. They're used to drive. They go hunting with them. That's why it goes on the. Oh. Um, there's a lot that. They're good for in the right setting. I just, you you can bring this thing in the next for the next forty years and I hope that you can find a board configuration that's gonna pass it if you want. But it hasn't changed. My 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 mood hasn't changed. I'm still a no. You can drive them around for them and um ATVs and UTVs are not economic development tools. Don't let them tell you that. They might, you know, make the tamer guy rich or or whatever, or grab some. Rot's up at the at the supermarket, but they're they're not economic development tools. So I I just, I'm still a no. I it's not a good thing.
So if I may, I I just want to make a couple of comments too. I mean, my. My biggest concern, I own an ATV, whatever, but it sits in my garage probably. Twelve months out of the year. I mean, literally, it does. I I haven't used probably maybe more than one or two times since I bought it. Um, if. If something like this passes in the village, am I gonna start driving around the village? Probably not. Um. What I will say is I'm I'm kind of. I'm kind of with trustee Miley in the aspect of, again, we have certain freedoms in this country, you know, you don't want to start infringing on those. I very much am concerned about safety, though, and that's always one thing that I I go back to. Um, I know as part of the presentation, I don't remember which one of you had had mentioned it, but you had said. You know, this is the ordinance that we have had passed in these different municipalities. We really want to keep this very similar. Well, if we're gonna if we're gonna consider something here, um, you know. That's, I might not be in favor of that, right? And I think that just because. Everybody around you, to Downey's point, is doing something or to Tiffany's point. Um, doesn't mean necessarily that you need to as well. And and by that, I mean. Again, I'm not for nor against it. I'm kind of right right in the middle, but I just, I would say that. If we're gonna have an ordinance that we're gonna craft, and this is later down the line, there are things in here that I don't necessarily agree with, and I think that there's things that would need to be changed to fit our community. Um, but again, safety, you know, this talks about hand signals and things like that. May maybe there is something about turn signals we need to put in there and 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 those type of things as well. So um, that's kind of where I'm at on it right now. I'm I'm concerned about safety. I I understand the. The concerns that you had about safety and talking about your daughter. I also understand why you guys are here as a whole, right? Um, so again, kind of right in the middle, kind of. Like I said, I own an ATV. Am I gonna start using it in the village because it becomes legal? Probably not. Um, but that's just me, so.
Okay, so my question is, you're talking about uh opening up all the village streets, correct?
No.
Uh. I know there are a lot of communities up north where they have trails, et cetera, where they look at more as designated. Roadways to gas stations and restaurants, uh taverns, et cetera. Is that something that if we would look at like perhaps Fredonia Avenue or. One of the other main roads like Fredonia and Highland, et cetera, opening it up to our businesses? And ensuring that uh anybody in the village who has an ATV, because I think I saw your arm wave up, that you have access to the main road? Is that something that?
So there are a lot of similarities that have the ability to venture the trail.
Yes.
Um, the problem, and what has been recognized is. It's covered very well, unfortunately, to determine where that person came from, if they live on a certain street to get access. So that's where the common thing is to openly vary personality. Uh, because that way someone on the opposite side of the town isn't excluded from the ordinance that maybe wants it, but wants access to only maybe one road or two. Um, so that would be kind of an explanation for that. Um, because there's nothing that identifies the person as the village president on an ATV or UTV to say they can go down this road. Also, it'd make it a little bit more difficult for your police staff um to monitor that and then kind of take care of controlling that. If that makes sense.
Can I get your name?
Ryan Hearn.
Thank you. Thank you.
I do have some, um, what is the average age of those owning the UTVs typically? It sounded like what I heard you say in the beginning was they're quite pricey, so if they're pricey, I would say it's not younger group versus younger. So it's. Friend again, I am seriously the second. Our UTV was worth twenty thousand dollars, for example.
Okay.
Um, so I'm going to be careful where I left rabbit and, but it's so different than a convertible. Because the tap down, the, you know, kind of.
Well, yes, you're, you're, are you being, you say you're going to be cautious because you don't have that surrounding around you.
Yeah, but it is more. It's more surrounded than a.
But that's your big, like, that's your, like, that's, like, precious to you, though. It's, it's a precious, I mean. Okay.
Yep, so.
It's very val, it's valuable, not just as much in cost, but it's. It's a hobby, it's.
So much that Emily, just so you're aware, a standard twenty day UTV.
Okay.
Ten fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay.
Um, right now Blair's shooting by the fully loaded one for forty eight thousand dollars.
Okay.
So they range breaking value. Um, there's people that would. Twenty thousand dollars here on the UTV because that's what they choose these for their motor van transportation. Um, elderly, they have a lot of members that that's what they use because that's what he was allowed to have ten B mobile. He was able to slide across the seat rather than to get in his pickup truck and try and lift his leg. Um, so he was a big advocate for, for the elderly, just because it gave him a little bit more access to local communities, local businesses. Um, that he wouldn't normally give it to.
Okay. And then what about, what are you seeing? Like, who's, who's driving the ATVs? Who are you seeing on those? More so.
ATVs are not to be in, but there, you are, you have your driver ATVs, there's nothing out there anymore.
Okay.
Uh, just for the symbol of people enjoy riding others. Um, I am side by side, I didn't rather have my wife next to me. We had a conversation, just as if we were in a car or convertible or whatever. Um, so that's, UTV is the, definitely the more prominent. Um, but there's still your driver ATVs that are. On his thirties, but there's also ones that that's how they grew up, so they're in their fifties and they still ride the UTV. Um, it's just kind of a personal preference depending on the person.
Thank you.
And I think I'm just, you know, uh, going on the cost subject of it and how much these things cost and everything, I mean. That's kind of irrelevant. I'm, I just want to sit, put it out there. It's kind of irrelevant when it comes to, again, safety, right? Like. I know if I let, you know, if I bought a forty thousand dollar machine and I had my son, you know, go out on it, he's gonna, he's gonna treat it like it's a Tonka truck. I mean, that's what he's gonna do, right? But that's my responsibility, right? If I'm like my, yeah, like my lawnmower, um. So I understand your question. I understand. Yep. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I think.
I wouldn't want younger kids. They don't follow the rules.
Right, so, you know, that's where I am again, in the sense that, you know. This, this has to fall on, it's just like anything, right? I mean, you can, you can say you're going to be responsible as the person that owns it is. Somebody that's riding it, that's not necessarily going to be the one that purchased it, you know, what are they going to do with it? But you can say that about a car, you can say that about a motorcycle. You can say that about a truck as well. So there's, just to kind of second, set the record, that's kind of. I thought.
I am a mother of two small children. You know, they're not close to riding each other on their own.
Ask your name. Yeah, please, please do, yeah.
But being a mother, I would never, even if they are of age, ride an ATV, UTV. If they were not well educated and safe, I would never put them in positions if they are not educated. To be riding the machines. They're my babies, they're my life. So you shouldn't have young kids as married, like, you're, the machines are expensive, you know, not relevant. But I'm not going to have, now kids should be happy on these things and just ripping around on them. And it is our responsibility as parents. Make sure they're safe. We want that for them. They're educated, they have their helmets, they're safe, and they're not smart enough or responsible enough, they're not getting nothing. That's how I feel about it. It's not kids that should be ripping around in here, it's mature adults that are educated, they're licensed. And even sixteen year olds driving ATVs. They have to go through a whole course in education. Again, it's also on the parents.
Mm-hmm.
To make sure they are responsible enough, even if they went through that course to be hopping on this motorized vehicle.
All right, any other discussion amongst the board? Any other discussion amongst the board? Anybody else that wants to talk about anything?
If you want to look at it the other way. Um, let's have kids that are on bicycles. And kids that are, they've got all these new battery operated things. My neighbor's got a, a little scooter, you know, it kind of needs to go like this, but it's motorized. And she's buzzing on a sidewalk at thirty five miles an hour, jumping off and down. And uh, she's jumping off the curb and on her, you know, because it's sidewalks all have the ramps.
Does she have insurance on her scooter? Maybe she should have li- liability insurance on her scooter.
She has insurance on her behind, because she would be riding that down the road if she had her.
Did she take a safety course with her that scooter?
All right.
Is it legal to go thirty five on the sidewalk?
All right, guys, let's uh. Keep that down a little bit.
But that's what I, that's what. Uh, you know, when you see the movie and somebody's kids are armed, you can feel that. You ever do that? Do you feel that? I can see her going down the street and I can just feel how she's going to feel if she falls off that thing. It's just like a motorcycle and so you get open carriage, four wheeler, where all of a sudden you turn too quick and you can roll that thing. If you don't have a rock cage, you're bouncing your head and whatnot. It's. I just don't, I don't see that anybody that can't have a license to drive a car. And get trained for it. Should be, anybody that's younger than that shouldn't be either given trained for and be able to use a four wheeler. Or, or a UTV. Because they're not mature enough yet to know what speed is. And, and they don't realize. That you can't just turn a corner because you want to turn there, but because you're going too fast. You turn a corner, the, the four wheeler is going to turn a corner, but it's also going to do what it is. I, it's it. It's not, if you come off a driver and you've been driving a four wheeler for that ATV for four years. Running up to, to deliver lunch or whatever, or pulling out empty wagon deck and whatever. You can, you know what it is. You've made your mistakes, you haven't hurt yourself because there were slow mistakes and you learned on the way. But you give some kid something like, um. At, at. Somebody here, their dad for birthday present, I'm going to get you blah blah, because you can do four wheelers. And the first thing they're going to do is they're going to want to jump on it and run down the street.
I think the difference between, wow. I was going to say, I think the difference between that though is something maybe illegal, maybe not at all.
I kind of rebutted you a little bit on that one. Um, so, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, but as we're reading this, it says ATV operators born on or after January first nineteen eighty eight. Which puts them at, what, thirty?
Twenty six. Thirty six, yeah, thirty six.
That guy.
I know, I don't have to do it, I have one. Uh, must complete an ATV safety course, safety certification course, and order to operate upon public trails and areas within Wisconsin. So, yes. Do we want to see kids get hurt? Absolutely not. Do we want to see anybody get hurt? Absolutely not. I don't know. Do you guys know the rates of accidents on ATVs or UTVs within the state of Wisconsin?
It's, it's all in the DNR website. They list them every single year for every sport, snowmobiling. Um, hunting, fishing, bowling, all of them. And when you look at. An ATV can be run twelve months out of the year and a boat three months out of the year, four months maybe. And snowmobiling, what, two months, three months, four months? But also to that point, hunting, under safety, I wouldn't give my twelve year old kid a gun if I didn't think he was mature enough once he passed the class. Just like ATVs, I won't give them keys if he's not mature enough. AT, ATVing is just like, I'm just saying, you have to measure the kid until they're a certain age. So I, you drive slow with the kid, you know, it's a little too, but it's adult activity within usual mobile. Uh, distance, uh, until, until he's, um, say eighteen, sixteen, sixteen. And then, um, yeah, so it's a measure, right, just like you measure god nothing.
So my point to that is, we don't have twelve year olds that's, are just gonna, you know, my twelve year old's not going to jump on our ATV and ride up to school one day.
Uh, legally, but they can't do that.
They could, but.
I appreciate the way you guys are running this.
Responsible parent.
And the responsibility that you're putting into this for the people that you're coming in contact with. But I'm worried more about the tourists, I mean. The tourists that are just going to come cruise and chew and, or they're on a trip, they're on a, from, from here to Kenochere or something. And they can make it through and all this stuff, you know, they might not have your group to educate them and, and cause them to do most.
So riders, they have to pay them, they won't be going off trail like around or they'll, they'll all stop and then they'll continue to where they're going. Unless the main roads, they're not going to.
Well, unless they're relatives that have delivered.
All right, and again, in the interest of keeping this orderly, we're going to try to keep this between us at the moment, okay? All right, are there any other comments from the board? Any, anybody else that wants to say anything? If not, we, we do have a responsibility here, I think, to take a look at this, and if somebody wanted to make a motion as to moving this. Um, along for consideration.
I would like to make a motion to consider the Letcher ATV and UTV Club parental council. For our staff to discuss with lawyers and review the ordinance system. A second.
I do have a motion in a second. Is there any other deliberation? Anybody want to say anything else on this? Would you, I'm thinking about doing a roll call vote here just to see kind of how this ends up going and then also, uh, just. Because I think that there's going to be some dissent here, so it'd be imperative for us to know, uh, how many votes we have on each. In each way, so, uh, if that's okay, I'm going to start down, uh, by trustee Miley. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 All right, my, uh, count is correct. We have, what, one, two, three, four, five to one? All right, um, so the motion passes and we will be considering this, um, and moving this along to take a look at a possible ordinance adoption in the village of Fredonia. Moving forward, um. I think now's a good time for me to ask the clerk to describe what happens next in this situation.
So at this point, you guys have told us that you want to move forward, um, and really the question is. What do you want this to look like? And is that in compliance with state statute? Um, so Jonathan and I will go over what the club has given us. If you guys have things that you would like to add, if you would like to detract. We don't necessarily need to do that in advance of the next meeting, but it would be great to incorporate that in advance. Um, so that we can get to, um. The cleanest possible version, um, of an ordinance. At the next meeting on the fifteenth, we'll introduce it to, we'll have another discussion with residents, with board members. We can make edits, we can make changes. But no official action will be taken at that meeting. On the first meeting in September, I think that's September first. Um. Yeah, we will, we'll take action at that meeting.
For a second.
September third.
Oh, sorry.
I have it in my calendar.
No, that's not, that's not right either. It's the fifth.
It's the fifth, okay.
What?
The first meeting in September, it's the first Thursday in September. We will meet again and take.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was.
So the next meeting, we're going to make edits, we're going to look at a clean version that is in compliance with state statute and fits into our ordinance. We can change it. Um, we'll come with the final version at that first meeting in September and take a vote.
I will just mention, um, keep an eye, and for anybody that's out there in the audience, keep an eye on the dates. There is some discussion of us changing our next board meeting. Uh, specifically due to some constraints we have with the DOR, I believe it is, for our possible referendum question on the EMS side of things. So it may not be the fifteenth of August, as the clerk had just said, we're possibly looking towards the twenty second of August as our first meeting to introduce this. So keep an eye on postings, the website, uh, Facebook, all that stuff so that you get your dates correct.
And also you can sign up for e-alerts through our website, and I send all of the agendas out, so as soon as the agenda comes out. You, you'll have it in your inbox. And Brenda will email you.
Okay, I want to thank everybody for coming. I want to thank everybody for your discussion. You guys really did great, both sides. Uh, we kept it orderly, we kept it at fair, and I think that, um. You know, this is something that we'll discuss. We'll take a look at the ordinance and see if this fits into what we can, uh, move forward with, with the village on our future. Boarding meeting dates, so thank you very much for coming. You're welcome to stay if you want, um, hear us talk a little bit about the referendum possibly, or if that's boring to you.
Bye.
Bye. Thank you, great.
I would, I would like, I like the idea of us coming up with some, it's the same thing that you were.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. Yeah, we could maybe do that. Yeah, I think, well, I mean, I think it's great. We should look at all that stuff.
I don't want to, I don't want to leave every little open field. Especially South Rocky Street.
Could be. No, I just was waiting for the room to clear, so, yeah, we should be good. All right, thank you, everybody. Uh, we will move on to discussion and possible action on the November twenty twenty four referendum question to increase the levy. For the purpose of funding the joint ALS paramedic program. So if you recall, last time we met, uh, we had talked about, we had the introduction from Ellers, talking about the different scenarios that we. Um, could have, depending on what number we would adopt. Kurt, I don't know if you see this in front of you or this sheet here. What this did is last time, uh, we, when we were talking, we had three different options that Ellers had proposed to us and said, well, if you. Increase the levy by two hundred thousand, two twenty five, two fifty, we had an example of how each of our tax base basis would go up. For our own individual home. Do you have that sheet?
This one here?
Uh, no, it's just a one pager.
Yeah.
So that, that. Right there is just an example of what would happen if, if we did that, uh, to our individual homes.
Okay.
So now our, our task tonight, and I don't know if this has moved a little bit because of. The deadlines at all, or if you guys need.
We still would, would favor some direction from the body tonight.
Okay. Storming up there.
It is storming.
Yeah.
I didn't hear that.
It's storming.
Does anybody have their windows open?
What did you say though?
So I had said that, that staff ideally would need what that ask is going to be, so we could start to formulate that full referendum question. It's not just. Can I get this amount of money? It's a full legalese referendum document that we have to fill out to comply with state statutes. And so we need time to prep that documentation for the next meeting.
Okay.
And this is the new results as of the suggestions from last night.
Uh, yes, and really the only changes that have been made are. I should say from the last meeting to this meeting, the changes in this calculation is one, you'll see that we've included the grant dollars, so that way it recognizes. Those funds getting utilized in twenty three, twenty four, and then in twenty five, the remainder. And then in the calculation, as trustee Dorworth said, uh, the only real change is in the equalized value. And it's good that we updated it because the state also updated their equalized value numbers. So when we plugged in all of that, even minus the, the four squares of the town of Fredonia, the two squares of the town of Belgium. It had very, very, very little. It had very, very, very little impact in changing that calculation. So the results of which you see here. Um, and again, just for the sake of everybody so we're on the same page, and the first page where it says ALS paramedic level budget. We have the budgets that you all have seen, you've approved for twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. You have the expenditures listed there. All the way down to the capital, and then the grant being utilized, and then towards the bottom, there's that total category. That is the amount that each of the municipalities we need to come up with collectively to fund the program. And then total contribution, that section shows that amount split up based off of the calculation. So you see in twenty twenty-five, what we estimate is, in our case, the village of Fredonia, we need to come up with around ninety-seven thousand. And then once we go to twenty twenty-six and need to be fully funded by our levy, it bumps up to that one seventy-four number. And then as you follow it year to year, again, each year's an estimate, each budget's gonna be approved on an individual basis. But if we track this out, you can see, two hundred K gets us close to that twenty twenty-nine number. A two twenty-five ask would get us close to that twenty thirty-one number, and a two fifty ask would get us close to that twenty thirty-three. So as I explained last time, the advantage of you choosing which levy amounts you would like to pick. Is it, in a perfect scenario, will. Decrease the amount of time before we have to come back to our taxpayer that asks for another levy increase. If that makes sense.
So. When I look at this, I'm gonna say the same thing that I said last night. This whole thing just drives me bonkers, in, in the sense that I know you had talked to Josh and, um. You know, he said that if, if some, if we don't hire people full-time and all that stuff, that it's gonna come down to. Them trying to call the money back and all that stuff, but what drives me absolutely bonkers is, this is a guess, right? And I know that it's a new program, and every, every new program that you have has to have numbers that come from somewhere, but I have a really hard time. Personally, saying, I wanna do two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. When we don't even get a need for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to twenty thirty-three. And not only that, if you think about. Us asking for two hundred and fifty grand every single year, starting in twenty twenty-five, we only need ninety-seven, one sixty-two, one could argue, you could take that. Remaining fund or whatever that you don't use and keep stockpiling it, so you go further down the line, you could be talking into twenty thirty-six, twenty thirty-seven, twenty thirty-eight before. You actually get to that number, so I have an extremely hard time looking at these numbers and saying, we're not even gonna need two hundred thousand until twenty twenty-nine, and saying that we need more than that, I just. You know, personally, twenty twenty-nine is a long ways away, I get the fact that there's gonna be some fluctuation. I get the fact that there's gonna be some decisions on hiring, how many people are we gonna have, how much new construction are we gonna have and things like that, but my thought is. I don't wanna spend a penny more than I, than I need to. Until I know what the hell's in this program and how this is gonna cost the taxpayers, so for me personally, if we're gonna do this. I'm at the bottom mark of the two hundred thousand, that's currently where I am.
We might not even need that.
Why you say that?
And because of the figures, because of the estimates and the screen lines and a lot of this other stuff. Right now. We include the. We include the equalized value. The population. And the number of costs, those are the three things. What. What bothered me is that we don't. The, the structures have nothing to do with what we do, we don't treat structure. We don't squirt water at them, we don't do anything, the structure just poses to people that we deal with, with parameters. So this shouldn't have. Equalized value in it as one of the facts. The very person that insisted that we have. Equalized value excluded this as an, in this as an element, and he said with his own month, mouse. That I want that, I wanna make sure that we capture all your, um, industrial park and your big businesses and stuff, and we get all that revenue in. So that you are paying your full, full share. And now, what he's doing is he wants to take the big businesses and, uh. Like the, the cheese factory and, uh, cheese, uh. Distribution center, those are two great, big cheese, that's probably twenty million dollars in increment, right up in those four squares. That he, that, that, um, random link. Services, and she's bringing coffee service, and, 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 and paramedics. He wants to take that out. So that his, uh.
Contributes less.
Is, is smaller.
Yeah.
And I think he's shooting himself in the foot, because he's making his individual homeowners. Pay more of the cost, instead of having their cost defrayed by this twenty million dollars worth of industrial on the north end of the.
That makes sense.
He's gonna find that out the hard, but that's what he wants to do.
He said the cheese factory's included in there, huh?
Yeah.
And then one that he wanted to exclude.
Everything in those four sections that, that, uh, bumped up to two hundred and twenty.
But just to clarify, the agreement and how the agreement is built, I mean, that's not what. We're discussing today, and I mean, we're under the agreement, whether we agree with the formula or not, right, that's the agreement that we're working under right now, and. And there might be amendments in the future.
But I think the problem with, I think the problem that Donnie's trying to say is, and again, I, I understand both sides where we're coming from is. These numbers aren't gonna be accurate if they do that, right, I mean, if he starts taking things out and putting things in, all of a sudden, you know, you may need ninety-seven thousand this year. But then if that comes out of there, maybe we need way more than that, right, and again, that just goes back to the whole point of why I'm like. Super not comfortable with, I mean, we're, we're asking about going to taxpayers and saying, hey, we want you to help us fund this, but we have no idea how much it's gonna cost. So that's. That's where I get very nervous about that, and I don't know how we, how we market something like that, right? And so again, if we're gonna move forward with this, I'm gonna be as conservative as possible, and you know, there's people that say, well, you don't wanna go out for a referendum every single year. As a taxpayer, I'd rather know what I'm paying for and, you know. I, that's, that's where I'm.
I was gonna kind of jump off of that, so I struggle with ten years.
Yeah.
That, for me personally, that's my struggle is.
What do you, how can you estimate ten years?
Well, not only that, but. Where's this program gonna be in ten years? Are we guaranteed this program is gonna be here?
No.
What happens if this program fails in three years, or five years, or seven years, then what? Now we're still asking our taxpayers to pay an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year towards this, a program that's not even here? That's part of my struggle, um, I also don't think that. You know, looking at these numbers, we need ninety-seven in twenty twenty-five, seventy, hundred and seventy-four in twenty twenty-six. We can't ask anybody for a dime more than what we actually need, and what we're projecting to be. But to Dan's point, I don't know, how do we all know that this is accurate? What if there's a huge wage boom in twenty twenty-five and it closes out of the water, and then? We're upside down, then what? Then the program fails anyways, and now we're out to referendum for our taxpayers for ten years, for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we don't need for a program that's not here.
And I think, you know, to be fair, there's some fail safes written within the agreement. You know, if. And this is the purpose of going out to the referendum this year, right, is because if we don't pass this, then it doesn't happen, you know, um. But I agree with your, your sentiment, I just, I'm having a really hard time wrapping my head around it, so.
We just don't have numbers yet, I can't believe in my head.
But my question then is.
How do we get to?
How do we get there, because, A, we're on a timeline for the referendum, and we can't just say we're gonna tackle this in October. Can't, then we're not going out for referendum, you know, so.
How bad would it be if we. Don't vote for our referendum in November and we push it till April? What would the repercussions of that be?
It'd be harder to do it to pay for the first half of the year.
A couple of things, one, you would. I, I think there's been a, and again, I know the full board has been a part of this, but there's been a goodwill effort amongst the communities to do this together. I mean, the village of Belgium is, is moving forward with a referendum ask in November, ideally, they would like us to do it at the same time, right, so whatever that answer is. We get that answer together, um.
You're missing years with the levy too.
So two, yep, two is we miss the opportunity to collect for the levy, yes, it's a smaller amount next year, but we still need to find that money somewhere.
No.
Um, and. The third point was, they managed to go in in November at a general election, is that's the biggest opportunity you're gonna have to collect, you know, that input from the electorate. And even if we wait till April, it's not gonna be near as many voters as there are gonna come in November.
Well, plus the other two townships are gonna be voting on it too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they don't have referendums, but.
So towns do not have to go out to a referendum, they would only, they hold a annual electors meeting to approve their set levy. So for example, with the town of Fredonia, if they need fifty-eight thousand six oh eight next year, that's the exact number that they're gonna ask and add to the levy. Through their electors meeting, and they can do that each year, they don't have to make a long-term ask like villages do.
So, so, okay.
I believe, what'd she say last night, wasn't it like one seventy or close to? Closer to that one fifty-ish number.
So I guess my comment on that again, and sorry, uh, Jessica, don't mean to cut you off at all, but my, my comment on that is. If the towns can go out every single year and say, we need X amount of dollars. Because they know exactly what they need. Yes, it sucks, but in the same sense, we're doing, we could do the same thing for our taxpayers, right, like. You don't wanna make it a habit of having a referendum question every single year, but I just don't know how. You know, and I'm with Tiffany, like, and to do it just forever, and say, we just need this forever, you can't do that, or even ten years, it just doesn't make sense. I'd be in favor of something for, you know, three, four, five years maybe at the max, um, and then. See what happens from there, but I don't know, I don't even know if that's possible. You know, I don't know how these referendum questions work and all that.
So don't forget you, the municipalities every year, when you fill out your levy limit worksheet, you can choose how much levy you wanna claim. And so some of the board members remember from when I first got here, when we first, when I first got here, you were collecting your full amount of general levy. But you were not collecting your full amount of debt levy, right, so we gave, we had the flexibility to. Increase the debt levy.
Do that.
Yeah, yeah, so you have the ability to, to do that, right? And so in this scenario, we can kind of do the opposite, if let's say we need, you know, next year we need a hundred K, and a referendum passes for two hundred K. You technically can direct me to say, Chris, lower the debt levy then by a hundred K, so that the net tax impact is only a hundred K. The referendum question is gonna say, is gonna allow us to increase the levy up to that two hundred K, and we would do that on the general levy side. But then we would lower the debt levy side, so that that tax impact isn't as bad, so we wouldn't be collecting extra money that we don't need. Well, I think that's, that's hard to communicate to the taxpayers, but. Just know we, we have the option to do.
Well, if we were to do that, we're gonna have to come up with a good way to, to communicate that. Um, but that, I mean, that would be kind of my choice is to do it that way, on the other hand, are there repercussions from doing that, didn't you say that you can only collect so?
There's repercussions if you don't accept the full general levy, if we did the opposite and didn't, if we got approved for two hundred K, and we only said, ah, we're only gonna grab a hundred K of that general levy. Then the next year, we are not gonna be able to get that.
So you still have to.
Uh, if you do it with a general levy, right?
Yeah.
We have to accept all of the general levy and then lower the debt levy for that difference.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? So regardless, if we said two hundred thousand, we, every year we would collect two hundred thousand, but we have general levy and we have a debt levy, sort of like what we had. Prior, when we weren't collecting all of our debt levy, we were, we were using those extra dollars from the general levies.
Something was working to keep our taxes lower.
Right, right, but regardless, um, we could, in the sense, say, yes, we're collecting this two hundred thousand extra every single year, but where in the past, maybe we had. You know, let's, let's say we had two hundred thousand dollars of debt levy, well, now because we only need a hundred thousand, we can lower that debt levy, we cannot collect that whole debt levy. Use those dollars to pay the difference to pay, you know what I'm saying, so the taxes don't. Auto, you know, we automatically just skyrocket, it is hard to, hard to say, I get what you're saying, it's hard to communicate.
There's some, some of the general levy would have to go to paying debt service.
It would have to.
And so we're not gaining a whole lot. We, we can gain what we need to gain, but it's not like a real fund. And then next year, we could adjust it back again if we don't. That's where the school got into, into troubles, they were paying debt off with, um, not losing.
But that's, that's, it's a little different, though, they couldn't do anything, right, other than. Because of the type of referendum, well, either way, yeah, right. Does that make sense at all?
So. Us in Belgium are going up.
Mm-hmm.
We pass Belgium doesn't. And what?
So in the agreement, the way it reads right now, it's kind of tough luck, you find the money, you are a party to this agreement. And I, I played that scenario out either two or three meetings ago at the joint meeting, I said, what if the village of Fredonia fails, right? We are running the dang program. And we all kind of looked at each other and said, you know what, this agreement says we're in it together, so if it fails, then we are scrounged together. And we're scrounged together a hundred K next year to make this program work.
To your point and to your question, though, what that, what's also in that agreement. It's the first five years, right, you're, you're committed for five years and you can back out, and that starts, that started in twenty-three, correct? So twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, so we would be obligated, in this case, to go through twenty-seven. Figuring out borrowing from a bank or whatever you would have to do to keep that, right, which sucks, cause that'd be way more.
Yes, so with that statement, my suggestion would be. We go to referendum till twenty twenty-seven. So we're fully committed for this program. Make sure it runs for five years to the verdicts. We reevaluate again. In twenty twenty-seven and then determine where it goes from there. I think that there, there's too much open-endedness and too much, we, we don't know what's gonna happen in November, we don't know what's gonna happen come July of next year. Or January of twenty twenty-seven, I have no clue.
Mm-hmm.
So.
You should say, or maybe.
Well.
They weren't fun.
No.
I just, I agree with Dan, I don't know how we can look at these numbers and say one hundred percent for certain, I stand behind this a hundred percent. We have to have X amount from our taxpayers, and this is what we're gonna do for ten years. I don't have that confidence, I don't feel, I can look my neighbor in the eye and say. Yep, two hundred and fifty thousand is gonna be good, that's what we need to do.
We're gonna go forward.
I'm not discounting the EMS services by any means. I have family that's first responders, we've used the service many times over, I don't know how many years. I don't discount that by any means. I'm.
Well, we understand your point.
I'm thinking of my neighbors, I'm thinking of myself.
You understand, but it's a purely a budgetary thing is what you're saying.
Yes, it's not.
It's not that you're not gonna, you don't, you're not in favor of the EMS program, right, right?
Uh, yes, is it a dollar a day? Yes.
Yeah.
But it's a dollar a day for this, and then it's a dollar a day for the next, and then it's a dollar a day for the next thing, and then it's a dollar a day for the next thing.
I agree.
Next thing, you know, you're paying an extra five hundred dollars a day.
That's how we've done the work we've done.
And that's the problem.
Right, so you're seeing that in twenty twenty-seven, when we evaluate this, we might have to have another referendum?
Yes.
So what you're thinking.
Yes, I say we.
Yeah, but if we don't need it, then we don't have to.
You know, one person asked to wait until, uh, this is five years, seven years, one municipality before they withdraw.
Five years.
I have a sneaky suspicion that the four of us would dissolve at any time before. Dissolve the whole thing. If we would choose to, and agree that, no, we're gonna, we're gonna dissolve this whole thing. So like you were talking about, it's three years and we're out of money and this, and what do we do now? You know?
Can you draft a referendum question that goes through, only through a certain time period?
Yeah, so I was actually just looking at those options, and, um, I mean, Todd with Ellers would need to come to our next meeting, probably with two versions, one, that's a permanent one, and one that's percent about a time. Uh, but this reads that the increase can be for either next fiscal year only. Uh, which looks a little shaky, for, for a set number of years, that's to your point, question must include the amount of the increase for each fiscal year, that the increase applies. Include the percentage increase for the first year. Or on the ongoing basis, which would be, you know, continual levy ask. All that being said, even if you did it for an ongoing basis, remember that. This body chooses on an annual basis how much they want the levy to be, so in that nightmare scenario that this whole thing collapses, right? Well, then technically, that board doesn't have to collect that extra two hundred K or whatever the referendum was to, and that'd be up to that board at the time to decide.
And I would just like to mention to the board is that, uh, last spring when we had election, was it spring, yeah, spring, we had elections in April. There was, uh, referendums in this area in Ozaki County. I think also in Washington, I'm mistaken, they all passed. Yeah, I mean, does that guarantee it though, but I mean, that's being on the optimistic side.
I mean, you know.
Hmm, yes, right, that's what I said, yeah.
As I think people are to be sensible. If we ask for a reasonable number.
And I, and again.
Thing we can prove and be satisfied with, sounds to me to be a reasonable number, but we, we have gotten there.
I was gonna say, you, you said one word, prove, and, and I just feel like we haven't gotten there yet, so that's why, again, um, I'm more in favor of just either. Somehow marketing the plan of saying, we're going to go out. And ask for the set dollar amount that, that stays with, with us and adjust our debt levy so that we don't necessarily need to collect all that money, especially in twenty twenty-five. Um, or we're, like Tiffany said, or I should say trustee Bard said. We go out to a certain year, right, twenty twenty-seven, something like that, and then see what happens. And I, same thing, I, I'm, you know, I don't wanna sound like I'm not for an EMS program. I, I told the story last night in the joint paramedic program, uh, meeting. You know, this past winter on my anniversary, we were out to dinner and my babysitter was watching my kids and she was coming into the house and she slipped and fell. And hit her head on the concrete step in my garage and the paramedic was there within like two minutes, you know? And how scary is that with having kids, you know, there by yourself under ten, not knowing what the heck's going on and, and then being there right away, which was awesome. So I'm not discounting that program at all. I think it's an awesome service. We do need it. Um, I just get, I wanna be very specific and very, be very wary about how much we're borrowing. On a piece of paper that just has increases that, you know, I don't, I don't see how this. Nobody knows what it's gonna look like past a certain date. I mean, we could, this is based on, if you look in twenty twenty-six, that's based on being fully staffed, I believe it is, by twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-seven. We don't know if, we don't know if we have everybody hired by then, you know? So there's a lot of what ifs in here. I'm for something, I just don't know what.
Yeah, we're getting what we paid for, but we just having a hard time paying for it. You know, I, I know, if we went throughout three years, twenty-five to six and twenty-seven, do the figures on that and say, okay. We could kinda, we could get pretty close to what it's gonna be just by estimating and this and. We could, you know, as part of the publicity, public case, publicization of. The, uh, the referendum could be that we've cut this to the bone and this is what we think we can get by with. But in twenty twenty-seven, if this doesn't work out, we're gonna have to ask for more. And it won't be like a big jump like this was. It'll be like a little bit more because we underestimated or something. And that could be part of our pitch. And then we're giving them the, the lowest number that we can. Clear those three years with that we, that our somewhat reliable information can use.
And what I, what I think is important about that too is if you go out for, say, two hundred thousand, right? For three years or whatever it is. I said, one more time?
I added about three years, it's four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars and it's a hundred and two thousand a year.
Yeah. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at, is we will even have some, you know, left over to say, okay. You know, technically, we, we could support this program or whatever if we didn't. There's some ways that we can look at that different things, put that way. I just, I'm, and I wanna hear from other people. I, I'm very passionate about this. So I'm talking a lot on it, but I wanna hear from everybody else too. And I think, you know, the majority of us have, but. I just don't like the idea of taxing people just to tax people, just to not.
That's what this feels like. It's.
And maybe we could sell it on, I mean, I don't know, maybe we could sell it to the citizenry that. We, we picked the most practicable, practicable number. And we, we tried to stay as low as possible cuz we appreciate, you know, the fact that, you know, people are strugg, struggling in this economy. But. This is something that's needed. It's, it's not, you know, this is one of, this is what. Uh, townships and, and villages and cities, this is their responsibility. Basically is, is police and EMS.
Right.
That's their basic responsibilities right there.
So. Another thought is, what if we have to go out for a referendum in twenty twenty-five or something? What if something else happens within the village that we're like, hey? The wastewater treatment plan.
Blew up.
Blew up. And we have. Something crazy. But it's the what if. That's my point, is what if something happened? What if this happens? We're going up for a referendum in ten years right now is what we're saying for two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand. What if next year we have to go up for a referendum for another two hundred and fifty thousand for another ten years? And then the year after that, something else happens, we have to go up for another two hundred and fifty thousand for another ten years. Like.
Well, we'll go down that fork in the road when it happens.
There's so many what ifs, what if? Well, you can't plan for all the what ifs, but that's what we're trying to do here.
I think there's different, a few ways that we could handle those situations differently. Like especially the store that's got replacement costs, it's got money that.
I would say, I think if you're concerned about.
To fix the, to upgrade the plan. You know, when last year it was five point one.
We could play the what if game all we want, but the, the thing is, bottom line, this is the most important thing we have to take care of.
This is it.
I agree.
I'm not saying not to do something, cuz we all know that we have to do something. My gut is telling me to cap it at twenty twenty-seven. And ask for what we need. What we're staying right here, we, I don't wanna go any further than years.
What, what we do now, based on the best information that, that are available to us right now. Is the right thing to do, cuz we have to do something. And you do what the best information says, well, this would be the right thing right now, given what you know, given what we know. It's a decision that we gotta make and we can't wait.
Where else can the money come from?
We gotta fire him, remember? He makes too much money.
Yeah.
Yeah, I make too much money too.
So what is your question? I'm sorry.
Where else can the money come from? What other options do we have? Is it different budget options? Is it different fundraising options? Is it different program options? Is it different grant options?
Yeah, I, I guess before I, before I answer that, I think we all gotta remember that we are literally creating a brand new municipal department. And, and that's very new and big and scary and expensive. And so we'll be able to, I would love to say that we'd be able to fundraise or adjust our budgets, right? To fund an entire department. And maybe we could, you know, next year for the little, for the little hundred K gap. But once you start getting into fully funding in twenty twenty-six, I, there's no realistic amount of cuts. Besides digging into our reserves, which we certainly don't wanna do either. That could, you know, make up for that amount, maybe part of it.
But there's only so much we can dig into that too, because we promised the bond holders. The bond purchasers, we wouldn't go any more than.
And, and keep in mind, you know, your levy grows by net new construction, so we could have a boom of development here in Ferdonia, right? And that would allow us to increase the levy. Um, Todd had referenced, you know, I'm sure he'll bring up at the next meeting that. With public safety, you're allowed to an extra increase of like two percent, I think it is, that gets added on to the levy as well. So we'll have a little wiggle room, whatever number you settle on, but not enough to, like, if you pick twenty twenty-seven's number one eighty-three. I would probably already getting, be wor, be worried about twenty twenty-nine, just because of those, that increased cost.
Right, but we're saying, you know.
Yeah, I know you'd be saying that there'd be another referendum ask at that time. Yep.
And how would something like that look? And I know you probably have to talk to, to Todd and our attorney and all that stuff too, but would we ask for? Three different amounts in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven? Or do we ask for the whole thing spread over three years? Or do we ask for a hundred and eighty-three, two fifty-four and then?
I think you can specify an amount for a collection year. And then they, they can change, you know, like pretty efficient in this.
Yeah, so.
You have to specify all of this. And you can only levy the ones you specified for that year.
Yes, that's.
If you wanna check on that, I'm pretty sure you can do.
So the question must include the amount of the increase for each fiscal year that the increase supplies and include a percentage increase. So it'd be similar to the projections that we did, which, and we're all not sure about these projections. But we'd be using, relying on these same kinda numbers to say, you know, next year we're gonna collect ninety-seven and next year we're gonna collect one seventy-four. And then say a hope and a prayer that these numbers are gonna meet, you know, what we need to collect.
Well, that's where I get a little bit. Two is, should there be some sort of cushion, right? Should we be asking for, Jessica, didn't you say something like one fifty or something like that every year? And I think that's just something that we need to talk to our, to Todd and everybody else about, and if we're interested.
We can, we can find out what the numbers are really say, and this is what we probably really should be doing. And then give it an extra ten percent, like engineers, like construction places where they all had an, had a ten percent contingency. First up, they're popped up that we didn't think of.
Yeah, and that's, and that's how that.
That wouldn't be excessive.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's how that two hundred K number pretty much came about. It was a five-year outlook plus a little cushion.
I remember reviewing the, the minutes, uh, from last meeting. I wasn't here, so, but I reviewed the minutes. And it was one of the board members that suggested that, and I'm just entertaining this, I'm not in favor or not. Uh, in favor of it, but they were suggesting that two hundred and twenty-five thousand would be the, the best. And so that we're not short, uh, shortchanging things. You guys, any, anybody recall that?
Yeah, and I think that was in perpetuity though, right?
And, and that, that was the understanding is that we just wanted to be on the safe side? Is that what that was or, but now you're thinking at two hundred thousand is a better?
Well, I think when we were talking about two twenty-five and two fifty, I think we were talking about saying, this is what we need. And just it happening forever. You know what I mean? It's a referendum that goes now and every single year we're collecting two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars more.
Okay.
Uh, this is, is taking a step back and saying, wait a minute, we just wanna look through a few years and that's why I think.
And then reevaluate it after three years.
Yeah, we were talking about somewhere in between twenty-five and, and, and two hundred. By the time we get done and got done with everything.
I'll just remind the board that I think it's from a marketing standpoint, it's really easy to sell a program while it's new and shiny and exciting. And I, I would hate, and you know, hopefully I'm still working here by twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight, I'd really hate to be here with successful program that's going great. And we know it is, and then we go out to referendum, referendum again to fill that gap and then it fails, right? Because like, what are we selling at that time? Besides that we have a good program, we need to continue running it. That I would imagine if I was a taxpayer, I'd say, well, why didn't you ask for that amount in the first place, right? Why didn't you have the forethought to think about that? So just something for you guys all to.
I think the argument that we're just displaying is, right? I think that's the argument that we're having, is we're trying to be fiscally responsible and conservative to try not tax our tax base out of this village, right? I mean, we hear that a lot where people are saying, I'm on a fixed income and, you know, all this stuff and it's like. You know, we've got sewer rate studies going on right now. We've got this coming up. We have maybe a wastewater treatment plant that needs fixing. It's like, there's a lot of things that are coming up and I just don't. That's my own personal opinion.
And not to mention, we're competing with probably the school referendum too, so.
Well, we can't even think of it. Yeah, we can't even think of it. We have to do what we need to do.
But I, but I, it, that's in regards to the amount that we're asking for. So if we're asking for a reasonable amount. And this is for something that's needed. I mean, we have to think about that, I think.
What's, what is that? You know, nobody's denying this program that we need and.
Right.
I think is gonna be utilized. It's the.
But we are in competition, if you, if you think about it, because people are gonna look at us as, oh, what do we need more EMS or school? I would hope that people would be looking at us as the better option, but, I mean. We had discussed previously that, uh, you know, do we push it back? Into spring and it's, well, the option is not there to push it back to the spring. But it is happening. We, we can't deny that reality is that.
Right.
And they're gonna, and, and taxpayers are gonna have to say, they're gonna have to me, measure out those values, is which, which is more important? Do we want both or do, you know? Uh, maybe they will want both, but who knows?
Or we're gonna ask you to come up with the numbers for the first, uh, what, three years or you want five years?
I said three.
Three, that's right, yeah. For the first three years and put them out and we can take a look at them and see if, if, if they're right, they'll run right. You'll see them and, and, and it'll make, it'll make sense. And then we can do that, add a ten percent to it, and then that's what we're gonna ask. I don't see how we can come any closer to that. We should be able to forecast three years on. And be pretty accurate the third years. Reason why it goes up in twenty-six is because we're out of grants.
Well. Yeah, that and. Hiring more people. I mean, your wages go up a hundred grand-ish. Uh, Trusty Aper, do you have anything you wanna chime in with at all?
Last year, like, so like the three years, I think. I had a feeling like, I mean, we need our EMS, do that program. I like, you know, how you stated about, it's new, so not as fresh. But just stretching it out hard.
And I just wanna clarify, we're not, we're not stretching anything out so far. This is just meant to be an illustration, right? To help you make the best, you know, decision for yourselves.
You guys need to focus like closer to.
Yeah. I think my sweet spot is still, you know, after all this conversation and actually hearing a little bit from Chris about stuff too. I still think that might, you know, if you do two hundred grand, to whatever it is, that would get you through twenty twenty-nine. It's five years of the program, well. We still have that five-year, whatever, after twenty twenty-seven. It, it's not easy. It's not an easy decision. I know you're looking for consensus.
Well, it sounds like, I mean, I've been jotting notes down. It sounds like if Todd's willing to do it, I will have draft two different versions.
Yeah.
One that's a two hundred K ask, you know, forever, and one that's a three to five-year scope. Right for the specific amounts that we're budgeting for. And he could probably talk about the pros and cons. I don't, I, I'd be curious to know if any of the other Ozaki referendums that passed, if any of them were temporary ones or all of them just did permanent.
That's a good point too.
I believe they all did permanent ones, but I'd have to check.
Be good to know too.
Oh, I would like to ask about the calendar, right? Because we have some deadlines that are looming. So our next scheduled meeting, so are you asking Todd, what are you asking Todd for? You're gonna ask him for two different questions. And when do you envisage the board making a decision on those? On which one they'd like to go with?
Well, that means on the, if it's twenty-second now is when we need.
Because it has to go to the D O R first. We need it back from the D O R by the twenty-first. So at the fifteenth, I'm looking at Todd's email here. So on the fifteenth, the D O R releases the twenty twenty-five personal property aid.
Yep.
Task. And then we can know when our levy is, right? And he'll draft the question based on that piece of the puzzle and the puzzle that, and the number that you guys provide to us. Tonight or maybe at a, on the fifteenth. Um, and then on the sixteenth, it needs to go right to Andrea at the D O R for her approval.
Thank you. So that was the urgency of tonight's meeting, to get a number from you guys, so we could do that.
And so then it needs to come back to us by the twenty-first, for you guys to approve the resolution. At a special meeting that we're gonna.
By the twenty-first, oh.
Yeah, so I need it back from the D O R by the twenty-second. And I need in my hot little hands, the final thing from you guys on the twenty-seventh, on August twenty-seventh. So those are the dates.
If we have to, we can pull a meeting in there someplace.
We're, we're gonna have to meet on the fifteenth, cuz we're gonna have to approve something. And then we're gonna have to meet on the twenty-second because. Because what?
To finalize.
Oh, to finalize.
So what happens at the fifteenth is you guys give us the number. Right? We have all of our ducks in a row. We have our personal property aid identified. We have our levy amount. We have the ask, and then that goes to the D O R for approval. It comes back to, from the D O R and then it goes to you guys for a final.
So can we take, can we take, hold on one second. Can, so can we take the two suggestions that we were talking about tonight, give them to Todd? Say, Todd, this is what we're looking to do. He gets the numbers on the fifteenth and he can put what those two scenarios look like. We have to choose one on the fifteenth, and then the twenty-second, we have to approve it. Correct?
Yes.
Well, you have to pick it on the fifteenth.
Right.
Yeah, but you approve the official.
Yes. Right. Okay, so that's good. That gives us a little bit of opportunity to see what both of those would look like. Right? And it gives us an opportunity here from the public, because our public meeting on this is on the eighth. On the sixth, thank you.
Speaking of the public meeting, what I hoped about getting out of tonight's meeting was what that fiscal answer is. So that at that public meeting, I can start to communicate to the public what that ask is. I think now with these two scenarios, I, I really don't know what I'm gonna tell them.
Well, I think what we're gonna tell them is what would you prefer?
Yeah, yeah.
That's a hundred percent. These are the two scenarios we're looking at. This is what we're proposing to the board.
This is what we had looked at. We thought it was too much. This is what we had looked at, we thought it was too much, so we went back to the drawing board and blah blah.
And the other thing that you guys are talking about are really like high-level complicated financial decisions.
Yeah.
And communicating those, I know we've been talking about this from the beginning are re- is really difficult, like that's the main task, once you guys have focused. In on a number, um, so this lis- listening session, I think really should be kind of the first of a few that we do as we get closer to November. So that these important and confusing and complicated topics, we can clarify to the public.
I'll, I mean, I'll. I'll do it as many as we need to do. I'll, I'll host as many as we need to do and coffee with the people and whatever, whatnot. Getting tired, so I'm just talking now, but. All you have to do. Alright, so. She's like, I'm leaving. Okay.
Looks different than when you were on the body, right?
These committees came to us as a board, we knew our numbers. If it's a new proposal, people know the numbers. You can't just sit there and say, I thought, you know, this large amount. Because it's just like every other municipality out there. I mean, it's, they need the money too and you have to also look at, like you mentioned, you know, the school district. It's another tax thing and like you said, what about another thing? Well, how are we gonna pay for, you know, if this doesn't happen, we don't get our new things in the building, whatever. That's the only thing I have as a test, as a former, as a former, as a board member. Why isn't there more concrete information on a basis of what this is gonna cost? It's there. So many just questions, give it to. Even if it's.
Yeah.
You know. People, this is your share.
Right, and I think we have that and I think what we don't know though is what that looks like past year three. And that's where I get.
Exactly, so. That the savings are, you know.
Right.
Say, then one to two years, we know who this much, but three years questionable, but by that third year. Then we may have to come back and say we need more.
Right.
It's all based on what is the need going to be.
Yep.
And then we'll have good estimates of what we're gonna need.
Exactly.
Each year for the next three, four years. And as a reference, it'll be, still be smaller, it'll be a smaller.
EMS system, they have all the numbers. It's there.
So I think what we do is, if it's okay. With, or the consensus of the board, I should, should say, I think that we look at those two scenarios and have. The discussion on both of them on the, on the public meeting, right? And then have the schedule of the dates, what we had just talked about.
So we're gonna meet on the fifteenth. And make a decision. And we're gonna meet again on the twenty second and finalize that decision.
Now we'll have to supply our numbers to the towns so that they can use the same numbers at their annual meetings.
Well, that's part of the budget that was approved, yeah, so they already have those numbers.
Well, I, as far as they're probably gonna change a bit.
No, they will with the levies and all that stuff that come out, but not much, I wouldn't think. Is that the, is that the consensus of the board? Does that make sense?
Yeah, makes sense to me.
It makes sense? Okay. Is that, is that a, are you okay with that?
Great.
Now that we've bludgeoned that to death.
Yep.
I will make a motion to resume, to go into closed session pursuant to the agenda.
Say second that.
Alright, I have a motion and I have a second. Uh, this does require a roll call vote. I'll start with trustee Eifert. All those in favor? Oh, uh, we're going into closed session.
Individual.
Just an individual vote. All those in favor? Trustee Eifert? Hi.
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 We are in closed session. We're gonna take a little bit of a pot of beer. Alright, we have come back from closed session at nine twenty eight P M. Um, with. No action. So. Okay, if we're gonna move on to correspondence then, um, I believe everybody has a copy of the audit. This is a memo from, uh, Melissa Dapias, our wonderful village treasurer. The audit was complete, uh, we reviewed it, Chris and. Melissa and me and Don, I think you were there too. But. Yep, so we sat down and took a look at it, we had some feedback. Um, I know that Wendy's going to be here, it sounds like August fifteenth to go through it, but this is the full. Um, bathroom material for you to take a look at when you have nothing better to do. In the bathroom or go to bed at night and try to sleep, so. Uh, no, but overall, very positive, no issues and that's what we have. Do we have any other correspondence from anything, anywhere? Items, items for future consideration, just keep in mind that we're gonna probably, we are going to need to have that special meeting. We will provide details uh, about having a special meeting on the twenty second. Is there anything else for the good of the order?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, we're out of here at nine thirty. Thank you, everybody.
Beer's gonna go down good tonight.